I would like to call to order the meeting of the Hingham Board of Selectmen for April 7, 2020. It's 7:00 PM. I would like to say that this meeting is being held remotely by telephone as an alternate means of public access pursuant to an order issued by the Governor of Massachusetts dated March 12, 2020, suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law. You are hereby advised of this meeting and all telephone communication. This meeting may be recorded by the Town of Hingham in accordance with the open meeting law, and it is in fact being recorded. Good evening, everyone, and thank you for joining us. I'd like to move to the approval of the minutes for our March 1, 2020, meeting. I understand there was a change to those minutes. Are we ready to vote on those?
I am.
I am also.
Okay, I'd take a motion.
I'll move to... I'm sorry, go ahead, Mary.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes dated March 31, 2020.
Second.
All those in favor by roll call vote. Joe Fisher?
Aye.
Mary Power?
Aye.
Karen Johnson?
Aye.
All right, and we will move to the next item on the agenda, which is the COVID-19 update. Before we go there, maybe I'll just take a quick minute and let everybody know if you don't have an agenda in front of you, number one, you can get it on the town website. There's a section for agendas on the town website. And then tonight, we will be covering COVID. We will be talking about the adoption of the website as the posting location for the Water Commissioners, which is the Board of Selectmen's role at this point. We'll be talking about a proposed new mooring field design, which will be presented by our Harbor Master, Ken Corson. We will be discussing some alterations to the grant of location in connection with National Grid's gas main replacement on Route 228. We'll then take public comment for items not on the agenda and move to our reports. We have one vote outside the agenda material that involves the signing of an MSBA form in connection with a foster school project. Having given you an overview, I'd like to move to the COVID-19 update. Tom Mayo.
Great, thank you very much, Karen. Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Great. Okay, this is Tom Mayo. I'm the Town Administrator. I just, this is a little bit lengthy, but I think it's important for everyone to try to get an understanding and have a sense of the work that's being done in town. So I will give a COVID-19 update and ask Michelle to give a status update of work being done by the town's employees as we move through this crisis. So as I reported previously, the town's emergency management team, consisting of the Fire Chief and Emergency Management Director, Steve Murphy, and myself as the Town Administrator, our Assistant Town Administrator, Michelle Montegier, Police Chief Glenn Olson, Deputy Police Chief David Jones, Deputy Fire Chief Lula Chance, and our Executive Health Officer, Susan Sarny. All of us make up the emergency management team, and we have been meeting daily since March 20 via conference call to coordinate our COVID-19 response. On March 30, we began the transition to the town's COVID-19 response to a new, more robust incident command system structure led by a larger incident management team to enhance local efforts to mitigate the spread of the COVID-19 in Hingham. The ICS, the Incident Command System, is used by FEMA as well, and it enables a coordinated response among various agencies by establishing common processes and common organizational structures for incident-level planning and resource management. So this is a robust, commonly-used tool around the country that many governmental organizations are now employing. Hingham's current incident management team is led by a unified command consisting of myself, the Fire Chief, and Emergency Management Director, Steve Murphy, as well as the Police Chief, Glenn Olson. There are some other key roles that I wanted to highlight in the incident management team, and they are there as follows. The Safety Officer is Dr. Elizabeth Eldridge, who happens to be the Board Chair of the Board of Health. Also, our Public Information Officer is being staffed by Michelle Montegier. That role is being staffed by Michelle Montegier, our Assistant Town Administrator. The Planning Section Chief is being staffed by Fire Lieutenant Jim Sheard. The Operations Section Chief is being staffed by the Fire Deputy Chief, Lula Chance. The Medical Branch Directors is being staffed by Lieutenant Kristen Appley, as well as Susan Sarny as the Executive Health Officer. Our Logistics Section Chief is being staffed by Fire Captain Jeff Becker, and our Finance Administration Section Chief is being staffed by our Town Accountant, Sue Nickerson. That team meets daily and is currently leveraging staff from about 10 different departments to help support and expand our COVID-19 response. Any media inquiries going forward related to Hingham's COVID-19 response should be sent directly to the PIO, Michelle Montegier. We will post this message to the website and send it out to media contacts. So regarding cases across the state, so the town is following the Massachusetts Department of Public Health's recommendation that local Boards of Health report positive COVID-19 case numbers by county. As of this afternoon, the state is reporting 15,202 cases in Massachusetts and 1,194 cases across the 27 towns in Plymouth County. We believe that Hingham is experiencing COVID-19 cases proportionally to other communities within our county. Please keep in mind that the numbers reported by the state are in fact lower than the actual numbers of cases, as they do not include clinical diagnoses of COVID-19 by medical professionals or people who self-diagnose and stay at home. The Hingham Health Department is in regular contact with residences and facilities for seniors and vulnerable populations in town to advise on procedures to protect public health, but our staff cannot publicly share information about individual cases. We are doing our best to mitigate the spread of COVID-19 in line with DPH and CDC guidelines, and are urging everyone in Hingham to please do your part by staying home as much as possible and practicing proper social distancing. The Health Department has restricted visitors from both Thaxter Park as well as the Lincoln School Apartments. Residents can still receive deliveries outside of the buildings at those properties. Connecting virtually with family and friends via Zoom or other video platforms is on the rise and really does help us feel connected in a time when we have to remain apart. So it's what we do in the government. It's how I'm meeting daily, all day, with different constituencies. So it does work, and it certainly is better than phone calls. So please utilize that utility. I strongly recommend utilizing video platforms instead of in-person contact. New guidance from the CDC, this is out as of Friday. The CDC issued a new recommendation that people wear cloth face coverings in public settings where social distancing is difficult to maintain, such as grocery stores and pharmacies. This is a voluntary public health measure that can help slow the spread of COVID-19 and help prevent asymptomatic or pre-symptomatic people from inadvertently transmitting the virus to others. The CDC is not recommending that people use surgical masks or N95 respirators for this purpose. We need to ensure that those critical supplies are reserved for healthcare workers and other medical first responders. If you head to the CDC website, you can find information about how to make simple cloth face coverings from household items and common materials at low cost. We've also posted links to that information to our COVID-19 webpage, which I strongly recommend you visit if you haven't yet and you have an interest in what's happening around the state with regards to the COVID-19 response. There's a lot of helpful links on our COVID-19 page within our website. Outdoor activities. We received word from the Trustees of Reservations just today that World's End will not be reopening tomorrow until further notice, and that same message goes for Whitney and Fairwoods. We have also closed tennis and basketball courts in line with the Governor's guidance, and the social country club does remain closed to golfers. So I would ask that we all try to respect all of those restrictions to the extent possible. I have an item for a TA report, but I'll save that to the end, Karen.
Okay, great. Thanks, Tom.
Thank you.
And so now we're turning to Michelle.
Yes.
Yeah, thank you, Tom. So just an update on the town services right now, what our different departments are doing. One of the changes we announced this week was at the transfer station, the swap shop remains closed, and we also close scale operations to protect staff and residents. This means that no commercial or residential vehicles can dispose of any construction debris or bulky waste at this time until further notice, but all other transfer station operations remain open with their regular hours, Thursday through Sunday. Staff from many different departments have been working outside of their normal duties to support food deliveries to vulnerable people in town, outreach to seniors to check on them and to see what they need, and to support our Health Department to mitigate the spread of COVID-19. We're actively talking to department heads and reassigning staff to meet the needs of different departments and programs during this time as everyone's operations keep shifting. As I mentioned, I think I've told the Board that Jennifer Young and Elder Services has organized people to make calls to 800 seniors in towns. Those are the folks who accessed the senior center in some way within the last year. So we've got folks from her department, from the library, accounting, and the clerk's office helping her do that. And so far, she's reporting that people are basically fine, that they've got enough groceries and essential items, but they really appreciate connecting with someone and the fact that someone took the time to call and have a conversation. It's nice to stay connected during this time. We also have an update from the library. So at the library, they're transitioning many of their services to online and a remote access format. They've been increasing the purchases of eBooks and audio resources and actively monitoring usage and requests to meet those demands. They would like to make people aware that patrons who don't have library cards can sign up on the library's website for a temporary e-card so that they can access these digital items, as well as digital magazines, streaming movies and music, newspapers, and other databases online. The library's young adult librarian is working with the middle and high schools to find out what the students need at this time and help with titles to augment school classroom services. More other library programs are moving to an online format. They'll be rolling out online storytimes, which sounds really fun, book clubs, craft sessions, including open studio and origami flower crafts. They'll be recommending reading and doing some online lectures on various topics, including Zoom tutorials, just because the popularity of this tool is increasing so much. Staff are also working on content for newsletters, social media posts, emails about programs and other available services, and recommended reading during this time. So they're staying busy over there. Those are the main department updates, I think, from last week. I just also wanted to tell people, if folks in the community have a question about town services, that's not necessarily COVID-19-related, but just a more question about something that's going on, and they're not sure which department they should direct it to, we think the best person to contact is Heidi Gaul in the Selectmen's Office. She spends a lot of time normally, when she's in the office, helping direct people to the right place. So like most of us, Heidi's working remotely right now, but you can email her at GaulH, so that's G-A-U-L-H, at hingham-ma.gov, or you can call the Selectmen's Office at 781-741-1451 and leave a message. Heidi's been helping us monitor those voicemails, and she'd be happy to direct people to the right place. That's all I have tonight.
Thanks very much, Michelle. Joe or Mary? Joe, questions for Tom or Michelle with respect to the COVID update?
Well, thank you to both of you. I know you're putting in double duty, going above and beyond, so thank you very much. Just a couple of quick comments and questions. You described, Michelle, you described a lot that's going on at the library. I just want to emphasize, the library physically is closed. People should not be going there. There's so much going on, it sounded like you could just go in and do stuff, which we'd all like to do, but the library is closed. Michelle, or Tom, I don't recall hearing, is there any update with respect to the schools?
Hold on. The school department, so I know that they have started their online classes this week. The online lectures and classwork has begun on Monday, but that's what I guess I would have for a school update.
Okay, I'm just hoping, at each of our meetings, we can give the community at large a general description of activities and events and what's going on with the schools.
Sure. The one thing I guess I would add to that, Michelle, I'm not sure, I think it was in your report, but if not, we should mention it. There are a lot of meals being delivered, and that's being done through the school food services program.
And just a final comment, I've heard from residents about people who want to go outside, and sometimes they're not being careful in terms of congregating, whether it's at the basketball courts, tennis, or golf. And I know town facilities are limited in that regard. I know that there are private facilities available. I just urge residents to really respect that six-foot distance and to make sure that we're all staying safe. Thank you.
Thanks, Joe. Mary, questions or comments?
I would just, two things. You know, with everything that's going on, it seems like every day brings with it a new set of challenges, and I am very appreciative to Tom, to Michelle, and to all our dedicated employees for not only finding new ways of working, which everybody has had to do, but also the willingness to take on new assignments. As Tom described, individuals and roles in this ICS system, it's just very clear that people are stepping up to do things perhaps that they've never done before, but where their skill set can be helpful. And I am just, continue to really be, to be very appreciative of that. Joe, I would just add, as the parent of a student in the Hingham Public School System, I can tell you that remote learning was rolled out on Monday, and the communication, parents have been communicated with, assignments are being given out, some things are being done in a synchronous fashion, others in an asynchronous fashion. And I would also just make a note in terms of a community update, that last night, the school committee did vote unanimously to, I don't know what the right word is, but they basically canceled the April vacation. That was due to start in a couple of weeks, and I think the feeling was that the instructional time would be valuable, that people would just be getting into a cadence with remote learning, and that on balance, the most appropriate decision was that school would be held that week. So that's just a little bit of an update on the schools from a family that's a consumer of those services.
Thank you.
Great, thanks, Mary. I did have one question with respect to the transfer station. Michelle, the scale operation was suspended. Is that because there has to be too much interaction between the person dropping off the construction waste and the staff at the transfer station?
Yes, that's exactly why.
Okay. And are there alternate locations that folks could be directed to for that kind of waste? I mean, I know that the construction waste scale has gotten very popular. Actually, it's a great source of revenue for the transfer station, so it's not easy to close from that perspective either, but are there other construction waste locations available to direct people to?
There may be private locations, and I can work with Randy and get something posted to the website on that.
Okay.
I think we're seeing a bit of some folks using this time at home to clean out their houses and get rid of some junk.
Right, so I just want to, I think we should try to alert people as much as we can and maybe, to the extent we can, provide alternatives for that.
Sure, I'll work on that.
Michelle, your comment, your observation, people are using this time to get rid of junk. Yes, my wife is using the time to get rid of my clothes. I gotta be real careful.
Further comment on Joe's wife's cleaning up?
I'm in trouble now, okay?
You know, I just echo Joe and Mary's comments. I think you've heard the same theme now for the last several weeks, and every week, it just continues to astound me how people continue to step up to serve the town, and as you've all commented, to take on jobs they've never taken on before, to incorporate technology they've never used before, and to do it in the spirit of cooperation and service to the town. So I appreciate that. So members of the public, I probably should have said this at the start. So for those of you who aren't frequent participants at the Board of Selectmen meetings, typically what we do is, we run through our agenda items, and the Board of Selectmen will ask questions and make comments on the topic that we're discussing as part of the agenda, and then we'll move to comments from the audience. And so at this point in time, I'd like to invite any comments or questions from the audience with respect to just the COVID-19 update at this point. Does anybody who's on the line have a comment or question with respect to that? Okay, seeing none, we are moving to kind of a technical item on the agenda, which is a discussion to vote to adopt the Town of Hingham website as the place for the official posting of water company-related business. So the water, as you know, the water company is a separate enterprise fund within the town and is subject to its own governance structure and its own open meeting law requirements. At this juncture, the Board of Selectmen serve as the Water Commissioners, and we are required to post when we have business that we are conducting as the Water Commissioners. So we would be discussing tonight, instead of using the physical location of Town Hall, Hull Town Hall, and Cohasset Town Hall to post our business as Water Commissioners, we would use the Town of Hingham website. And so with that, I would turn to Joe Fisher for any comments.
No, I think we need to do that. This is the efficient way to do it, rather than not only posting in Hingham, but also Hull and Cohasset. So this will allow us to, I think, proceed more efficiently. So thank you for arranging this.
Great. And I take no credit, it's all John Coughlin. Mary?
Now, I appreciate Tom working with John Coughlin to put this in order.
Great. And so just so everybody knows, if you go to the Town of Hingham website, there's an Agendas section, and so if you click on that, you'd be able to find agendas for the Water Commissioners in that location. So having discussed that, I'd call for any comments from the public with respect to the posting on the website for the Water Commissioner business. Okay, seeing none, I'd accept a motion.
I move that the Board of Water Commissioners, which has been designated to operate the water system under Chapter 139 of the Acts of 1879 as amended, and by vote under Article 11 of the 2019 Town of Hingham Annual Town Meeting, hereby vote to establish the website, the town website, www.hingham-ma.gov, as an alternative method of notice for open meeting notices of its meetings pursuant to 940 CMR, Section 29.03 Sub 3 Sub B.
Second. All those in favor by roll call vote. Joe Fisher?
Aye.
Mary Power?
Aye.
Karen Johnson?
Aye.
Okay. And is Ken Corson on the line? We will move now to the discussion of the new mooring field design for the Inner Harbor.
Good evening, this is Ken Corson. Can you just confirm that you can hear me?
Yep.
Okay, excellent. So before the board right now is the proposed mooring plan for the Inner Harbor. The last time we implemented a mooring plan in the Inner Harbor was about 10 years ago, and we're looking to modify the plan this year for a couple of reasons. One is, all the moorings are currently out, and when they go back in, we'd like to put them in the best position possible. To develop this mooring plan, a couple factors were taken into consideration. In the next couple of years, the state will potentially replace the boat ramp in the Inner Harbor, and if that's replaced, it would have an impact on the mooring field. And then the town also has a potential project to put new floats in at Barnes War. So we took both of these potential projects and included them in this plan with the relocation and placement of all the moorings. There's, all these moorings will accommodate all the boats that are currently in the Inner Harbor, and we will be able to add a couple additional boats from the waiting list. It'll look very similar to the field that's been out there for the last 10 years. The power boats will be on the north side, the sailboats will be on the southern side, and there'll be a fairway that'll go down the middle. So if someone hadn't seen this plan and known we were changing it, they probably wouldn't notice many differences. I guess that's what I have to present, and I can open it up to the board if you have any questions for me.
Sure. Joe, any questions for Ken at this point? I should point out to everybody that we're not voting this tonight. We just got these designed, so I think we wanted to think about it a little bit before we move forward with a vote on this, to the extent we need to vote on it.
Yeah, so I've had the chance to review the plan and to discuss it with the Harbor Master, and I really appreciate him bringing it not only to us but to the public to make sure that we get appropriate input. I just want to confirm with the Harbor Master that we understand the goals that you were seeking to achieve and your view as to the fact that you really have accomplished by this redesign, the goals that you set out to do.
Yes, again, the goals were to accommodate the potential plans at the boat ramp and installation of the town floats at Barnes War, and this plan should allow for both those projects to go forward if the Board chooses to do so. And it'll allow us to keep all the boats in the Inner Harbor that are currently there and add additional boats from the waiting list. Prior to it coming before you tonight, it did go to the Harbor Development Committee. I believe it was probably in February, I believe, at their last meeting, where this had been socialized prior to the meeting, and it was discussed, there was some public comment and input on it. So it has been out to the public for a little bit already, and I'm comfortable with after the board hears it today, if you choose to have some more public comment on it, I'm fine with that also.
Thank you. That's all I have.
Mary?
Thank you. I had an opportunity to both talk with Tom and as well, Ken and I spoke today on the mooring plan, and it all makes sense to me. I was especially glad to hear that this has had some visibility and some discussion with the Harbor Development Committee. And, you know, I think having it at this meeting will give it a little bit of additional visibility, but I'm comfortable with the process. I'm comfortable with the approach, and I think that it is opportunistic in light of the fact that all the moorings are going back in, and I appreciate that Ken has taken the harbor projects into account when this mooring field was designed.
Great, thanks, Mary. So Ken, I was a little, I'm sorry I didn't get a chance to talk with you today, but I just want to be clear, because I wasn't, that you think the new plan results in a slight net gain of moorings?
Yes, so that's kind of a difficult question to directly answer, but yes, we might, the number of moorings in the actual mooring field has changed. So if you compare prior plans to this plan, I think you'll see that there's a small decrease in actual numbers, but that's because what happened is we've actually not accounted for in the new plan some small moorings that are located around Barnes War. They're not in the current plan, but if we find that we need those plans, those moorings, they can easily be reincorporated. So the number right now is a little bit less, but we're not losing any moorings. And I think it's also important to point out that with this plan, it's very conceptual. Most of the moorings will be in this configuration, but as we start putting them in, if we find that any conflicts arise, there might be small variations in the plan. You could see a mooring that's slated for a 30-foot boat become a 25, so there could be some small changes, but conceptually, this is what I'm looking to achieve.
Okay, so sort of big picture for me, anybody who had a mooring in the Inner Harbor will have a mooring in the Inner Harbor.
That's correct.
And, but maybe not the same location in the Inner Harbor?
Locations will be reassigned according to the new plan. I think that you should, anyone that currently has a mooring out there should anticipate that their reassignment will be similar to what they had. For instance, if you had a power boat and it was a 30-foot boat, you'll still be on the north side of the mooring field, and you'll be further out away from town here. So they'll be generally in the same area, but I'm not guaranteeing the exact same. So they'll be generally in the same area, but I'm not guaranteeing the exact same location.
Okay. And mechanically, how does this work? You locate the moorings, but do individual owners have to actually place the mooring? How do the moorings go back in?
That's a great question. Here Cove Marina is a primary mooring service provider for all the moorings out there. They, the company leases moorings to people as well as maintains private moorings. So that company will be putting all these moorings back into the water in their new assigned positions. That process has already begun, the moorings have started to be pre-placed, so once we know which plan we're going to be using, they can be quickly put in position so that the moorings will be ready for the boaters later this spring.
Okay. And at this stage of the game, there's been no, kind of no restriction on the harbor that we're anticipating, so we're kind of moving ahead, understand with the idea that marinas would be open, people would have access to their boats, right?
That's correct. According to the Coast Guard and some recent communications, the Port of Boston is open, we're part of the Port of Boston, so we're open, the waterways are open, marinas all anticipate that they will be opening sometime in May. The word I've heard from people is that they're home, they're getting their boats ready, lunches are being scheduled, so everything indicates that people are anxious about their boats and will be looking to boat and also do some social distancing.
Right, okay. Okay, I may follow up with you this week, just to make sure I have a good sense of this new layout. At this time, I'd open it up to the public for any comment with respect to the proposed new mooring field design for the Inner Harbor. Okay, seeing none, we will, I guess we'll take this up again next week for a vote. Do you need a vote from us, Ken?
I would like the Board of Selectmen's advice and consent on this before we go forward with any plan.
Okay, great. We will put it on the agenda then for next week.
Excellent, thank you.
Thank you, thanks for the presentation.
You're welcome.
Okay. Next up is National Grid. I think, I think it was probably one of the last times that we were together at Town Hall, Dennis McCafferty and Nelson came from National Grid to talk with us about the commencement of the spring work cycle for the big gas main replacement project that you all know is going on on Route 228. You know, we've been concerned about the impact of that project to the residents along that 228 strip that's being worked on, as well as traffic and the police details. So there's a lot of sort of balancing of interests that goes into, I think, undertaking a project of this complexity and this sort of level of disruption, but we're also very grateful to National Grid to have new gas mains along 228. So in thinking about, in thinking about how best and how most efficiently, I guess, to progress with this project, there's one offshoot of the project that goes up Rockwood Road, Dennis, I know you'll correct me, maybe 900 feet, and I think in discussions with the police chief and with representatives from National Grid, the suggestion was made that it would be better, for all things being equal, it would be better to undertake that work during the daylight hours. And so the grant of location, I'm sorry, apparently there's a coyote in my yard. As part of the original grant of location, because the work was taking place on Route 228, we restricted that work to the evening hours, but this 900-foot project on Rockwood Road, the suggestion is being made that we undertake that work during the daytime. So Dennis, I don't know whether you could maybe give us a little background on the request and the project?
Sure. Good evening, can everybody hear me okay?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, great. On the line with me is Nelson Pio, the contractor oversight supervisor, and also Mike McDonough from M&amp;X, the contractor doing the work. So yeah, thank you for the time, just giving you an update on the Free Street Route 228 project, which includes Rockwood Road. As you know, the purpose of this project is to replace aging, leak-prone pipe. To date, we've done about 2,000 feet with no incident, we're just beyond the library and near the Rockwood Road section. So we believe, we're very confident that we're going to encounter ledge on Rockwood Road. We think it's definitely going to be safer, more productive, and also it'll lessen the impact on the residents if we're allowed to do this during the day. You know, we've been working close with the police chief to come up with a traffic management plan. It's, so far the project's, it's gone very well, I think, but when we encounter ledge, it, obviously, you know, it's noisy, and given the circumstances we're in with, you know, the traffic being reduced, we think it's a good opportunity to come before the town and request that we shift to days. And if I could, I would like to just turn it over to Nelson, just to go over some job specifics. I believe it's around 750 feet of new main on Rockwood Road. Nelson will also go over COVID-19 protocol and guidelines. Nelson?
Good evening, can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Hi. Yeah, my name is Nelson Pio, I'm a construction supervisor of National Grid. I just want to start off, this project is a gas main replacement project. National Grid is not connecting services at this point, and no one will be entering areas of residents' homes. This is mandated utility work, and it has been deemed by the governor as essential work. National Grid has a strong commitment to maintaining a safe work environment, not only for our employees and our contractors, but also for our customers in the community where we operate. With that said, we have reviewed the supplemental guidelines for limiting exposure and workers' infection at construction sites issued by the governor last Thursday, and we are taking care to communicate with our contractors the importance of adhering to these guidelines. I can assure you that on this project, National Grid's contractor, M&amp;X, is implementing the recommended safety guidance regarding limiting exposure as well as the worker infection protocol. These include: There is zero tolerance for sick workers reporting to work. There is a protocol for workers, for contractors to report cases when work has become ill. There are WASH stations and frequent hand sanitizing on the job site. Employees have been assigned pieces of equipment and discouraged from sharing the equipment with others. The CDC has issued a new recommendation regarding the use of face cloth coverings. Keep in mind, on these construction sites, like the one we are talking about here, the most, for the most part, employees can maintain the recommended six feet of distance, but when they cannot, they have been advised to wear the face covering. As for the public, this is an essential and established work zone. The road closures and police station details consist of five police officers on site. There should not be any need for any member of the public to come within six feet of the employees on site.
Thanks.
So I mean, today, essentially today, we have completed two of the 8,000 feet of main, and things have gone really well. Digging's been great. We have a pretty good feeling that on Rockwood, you know, there's going to be ledge, and I think that not being one of the main drags, traffic should be reduced at that point, and we should be able to, you know, work that section of main during the day. You know, so, you know, at the very least, you know, we want to be disrupting, you know, any sleep going on at night, you know, hammering ledge.
Right. Excuse me, and your industry has been ruled as essential on the governor's list, so that's why you're able to continue this work?
That's correct.
Okay. Joe, questions for Dennis or Nelson?
Yes, and perhaps it may even be a question for Tom. Have the residents along Rockwood Road been notified, and assuming that they have, have we received any comments or concerns?
We have, so we notified them all on Friday. As a matter of fact, Police Chief Olson personally delivered the notices to all of the residents along the, along Rockwood Road that would be fronting near, at this, at the work site, and so that occurred on Friday. The, Dennis, you may want to speak to the communication you sent me this morning regarding a communication with a nearby resident. That's the only one I've seen, Joe, the one Dennis will explain now.
Yeah, and just to be clear, when you say the police chief personally did it, I think he attached it to their doorknobs, he wasn't going in.
Yes, yeah, he didn't go in people's homes, yeah.
Yeah, hi, Tom, it's Dennis again. So just to, just to clarify, the Rockwood Road residents were notified at the start of this project, about a notification was sent out, however, it did say that it was going to be night work, and obviously that's why we're here. We can, and we can amend that letter and send it out again if need be. I did speak with a resident at 10 Rockwood Road, I believe, it might have been Saturday, I don't know the days running together, maybe Monday, about her concerns about the project and, you know, interaction with the workers, social distance, et cetera, and I tried to reassure her that some of the changes we made, we recognize the times we're in, there'll be no tying over of new services into this new main until, you know, conditions clear up. So I did get one call, respected her opinion, it's, like I said, there's the optics here, right? Sometimes people ask, why are we working? We're essential, by the, essential personnel, essential industry by the governor, so we're trying to get out in front of this, of this main replacement work. It's part of a big, a large overall plan by all utilities, cash utilities in Massachusetts, and we want to be in position to when the, I guess, the regulations around social distancing ease up, we want to be able to tie in new services and take that old main out of play.
Thank you. So just to be clear, I'm not hearing a need for you to send out additional letters because with respect to this particular area and the times, the residents have been notified already of the change from night to daytime, so I don't think an additional letter needs to go out.
So I think they were notified of this hearing or the agenda, I don't know, once, if it gets approved and we alter the hours, I didn't know if the town would like us to send out another, about a notification with the changes.
Yes, we would, Joe, or Dennis, but Joe, we didn't do that yet because that hadn't been, that hadn't happened yet.
Sorry, okay.
Yeah. Just to be clear, the notice that the police chief hand-delivered was notifying the public of this discussion.
Okay, got it. That's all I have, thank you.
Thanks, Joe. Mary, any questions or comments on this?
Thank you to National Grid, thank you for your explanation. I echo the town administrator's comments, I think that it would be a very good idea to notify people that this is moving from night to day, especially because there are many people who are working from home, and I think for those people, understanding when there may be a period of time where it could be a little noisier, would just give them a little bit of an opportunity to plan for that.
Yeah, completely agree with that. You know, so just, they're, like I alluded to, I guess, at the beginning of the discussion, there are just a number of variables that come into play in determining whether, you know, this may or may not make sense for the town to grant. So we've already granted the opening of the road, we granted the location, and we granted it pursuant to a list of conditions, which is very typical for us, and because it was on 228, one of those specific conditions were the working hours. Typically, National Grid would come in and work, you know, during the day, Monday through Friday, but because of this particular roadway, we instead asked them to work evenings, Sunday evening through Friday evening. So the work will, the work will take place, to Mary's point, it's a question of, you know, disruption in the evening or disruption during the day, because as we've said right along, this is a big and complex project, and it's, you know, it's not easy work, and it's not easy to live near this sort of work, so we certainly understand that. But I think some of the factors, at least that I heard, in discussions with National Grid and the chief of police, were, you know, the likelihood of ledge, frankly, the availability of asphalt to be able to fill as they dig, the fact that they do implement social distance practices for their workforce, and from the town side, you know, we're concerned about the safety of our police detail, the safety of the workforce, and the safety of the folks that are traveling those roadways. So, you know, in balancing all of those, I think it was worth, it's worth entertaining, allowing them to move to daytime work for this particular portion of Rockwood Road. At this point, I would entertain questions or comments from the public with respect to the change in hours for the Rockwood Road National Grid work.
Hi, yes, this is Craig Hutchison, can you hear me? I live at 10 Rockwood Road.
Yes, Craig, please go ahead.
Hi there. So, yes, so my wife did speak with, I believe it was Dennis, and he was very respectful, and I appreciate that. So I guess my question is, is this really essential work, given the situation we're in with kids being home from school and going out and playing in the front yards during their non-schoolwork time, and lots of people working from home? Is it really necessary that we do at least the Rockwood's extension at this point in time? I understand it would have been approved sometime last year before all this came to a head, and I'm just wondering, given the circumstances, would it not be easier and less disruptive to postpone this work to some other point in time? And as I understand it, if we're not tying into residential, the workers would have to come back and either redig and hook things up into the residential pipelines anyway, so I guess I'm just curious as to why there's the urgency and concern for my kids and selfishly for my ability to work during the daytime hours.
Certainly get that. I'd like to turn to Dennis or to Nelson, I think part of it is why, this is main replacement work, not tie-in work, and so it's the main, main gas pipes that run in the street, and why this offshoot onto Rockwood Road is significant to the 228 project. Dennis or Nelson, could you explain that to us?
Yeah, so I'll jump in, and Nelson can support me as needed. So when we, we just don't arbitrarily decide what mains we're going to replace in certain towns. They're all scored by our engineering department, and there's a lot of factors that go into the scoring, and when I say scoring, that determines which ones we prioritize over other mains that we need to replace in the town. We also work very closely with the DPW in Hingham, so if they have streets or public works projects and we have at-risk main, we try to get out there and replace it before they do their work or pave a street. We've been pretty successful with that. In this particular main, it has been a priority for us, the main is over 100 years old, and when we score these mains, they're based on the amount of leak calls we get on this pipe, the material, and the age. And this meets all three of those criterias, and that, it's been a priority for us, you know, it's, we, when we work with the DPW, it was, oh my God, you know, we have to adjust 228. Well, we did it a couple of years ago, it went really well, Rockwood's part of this main replacement, and yes, it is vital work. In terms of coming back and reconnecting the services, what we call tying over the services to the new main, when we get the main in the ground, we're home, we're basically at the tail end of a project. Tying over a service to a main, in most cases, simply means it's a plastic service, we take it off the old main, we tie it into the new main, do a pressure test on it, and go into the customer's premise and relight their equipment. And other, and the only case it could be a little longer process is if it was an older service, and we had to, instead of tying the service over to the new main, we had to replace the whole. we had to, instead of tying the service over to the new main, we had to replace the whole length of the service in kind and install them a new plastic service. Other than that, it's, the tying over the services and doing the relights is at the tail end of the project and the work goes rather quickly. So if we put off this main work in this project, it's going to be, it's going to mean losing months of work. We might not even be able to finish it this year. Nelson, if you want to add anything, feel free.
No, I believe Dennis really hit it, you know. Engineering decided that this is a 1913 main, six-inch base steel that has had active leaks. So it might not seem, you know, as important right now, maybe, you know, going up Rockwood, but, I mean, this main does feed into Hull and, you know, other communities surrounding our area. So it's definitely one of the critical mains or a main feed within this area that we operate. So it's definitely important. And 80% of the work that we're doing right now is mark-out, verifications, and main installation. So the service work really is at the end of, at the end or completion of the project. So it's pretty important that we, you know, try to get out there and get a jump on this main replacement project.
Karen, do you mind if I ask a question?
No, go ahead.
Nelson or Dennis, it might be helpful for the residents to understand what the timeframe you might be actually in front of any particular home, assuming you hit ledge. How long might you be in front of any particular home?
That's all yours, Nelson.
So it really all depends on if the ledge is fractured, how deep is the ledge. I mean, so typically, the top of our main is at 36 inches. So if we're hitting ledge at 30 inches, you know, maybe we only got a notch up a foot or two, you know. But if we're hitting ledge, you know, full depth, then, you know, the production's definitely going to be slower. And it all depends on how hard the rock is. If it's current, if it has been fractured, you know, that really all plays a big factor into production. So up to date, you know, digging's been great from short street up to, I want to say about 20 or 33, or a little beyond library, that's 2,000 feet, and that's all been completed under, within a month's timeframe. So hopefully, these next 2,000, 3,000 feet, we are anticipating ledge and hopefully, you know, the digging or the hammering or the fracturing of the rock, you know, we're going to be doing decent in that stretch.
So again, this little offshoot is key to this project because of the age, the age of the main?
Yeah, it also, it has to be tied in to the main that we're replacing on 228. Correct me if I'm wrong, Nelson. So it's all part of the same, the same project, the same design. So, and that's why we're hoping, you know, for the best, that we can get some decent footage a day on Rockwood. If we do, we won't be in front of a particular home for more than, and I hate to, and I don't want to go on record saying one or two days, but if things go well, it could be, you know, a couple of days, it could be three to four days or more. But we don't know yet. We suspect that we are going to hit ledge there. Trying to answer your question, Tom, in terms of, you know, how long would it be in front of a particular home? You know, the way it's gone on 228, it would be one day. I don't think that's going to be the case here. It'd probably be two to three days at most in front of a home, if I had to make an educated guess.
Okay. Mr. Hutchinson, does that answer your question? I know it's probably not the answer.
Yeah, exactly. No, I get it. I mean, I don't want unsafe pipes, right? So as I understood it, they were just going to be digging, laying down the pipes right next to the other pipe, and then having to come back and redig. And so it just didn't make a whole lot of sense to me. It seems kind of inefficient. But, look, I get it. I lived with ledge all from my yard. There's no way you're not going to hit ledge because there's just a ton of ledge everywhere here. So, you know, it's, I would ask, I think you were talking earlier, I don't know if everyone that's on the stretch coming up the hill and as far down as you're going to go, I don't know if anyone else is on the line or if anyone else realizes it, but I think getting a notification to them that this is going to be, you know, I don't know, it could be a couple of days at each house, so it could be, what, a week or two of noisy roadwork when, you know, every family is home and trying to get their kids through remote learning and trying to do work themselves. And it's, you know, it's just a high-stress time and I think this is just adding to it. So if there was any possibility of postponing it, who knows when this thing ends? So I don't know that you can, but if there's any opportunity of postponing it, I think would be the right thing to do.
Thank you. Comments from the public with respect to the request for change in hours on the National Grid grant of location? Okay.
This is Joe, I have just a follow-up question. If the work was to proceed as currently scheduled mainly at night rather than during the day, what would that do to the timing? Is it likely to go faster if this is day work or likely to be unaffected whether it's day or night?
Well, you know, I'll let, obviously, Dennis and Nelson speak to it. My understanding was that there were some efficiencies during the day, in particular because of the availability of asphalt, because projects are not proceeding in the volume that is typical for this time of year. The access to asphalt during the evening hours is essentially nonexistent. So National Grid has to go out and buy asphalt by 3:00 in the afternoon and then has to keep that asphalt warm all night until they're able to fill the holes that they're digging. So the availability of asphalt during the day makes it much more efficient. They can just, you know, they can cover and go as they dig. You know, I think, I think the other issue was just overall safety of the crew and frankly, the police detail that, you know, is watching out for the crew and the traffic. So some of it was just kind of line of sight to be able to, I think, effectively, you know, dig through these, what will be, I think, a more complex area of the project. But Dennis or Nelson probably have a much more technical explanation than that.
Well, I'm going to start off and then I'll have Nelson jump in. So product, in terms of productivity, it's much greater during the day. Keep in mind, if we do encounter ledge in the hours, you know, 7:00 PM to 5:00 AM, we're not going to pound ledge all night. We just, we can't do it. You know, it's unrealistic. We ran into it on the phase of 228 on Main Street on the last project where, at a certain time of night, and I'll let Nelson speak to the specific time, we just shut it down. And whatever we had broken through for the night, that's our productivity for the night. So Nelson, if you want to add a little to that, feel free.
Yeah, I don't really think there's going to be a good time to be hitting ledge, whether it's during the day or during the night. But I would say it's probably better off if we're hammering during ledge, hammering during the day, you know, it would be safer, you know, visibility would be better. And, you know, at least we wouldn't be interrupting sleep at that point, you know. But if we did have to work at night, it would be from 7:00 PM till about midnight. We couldn't put the residents through the hammering till 5:00 AM, you know. So whatever we got in for production, we would install the main and backload at that point. But yeah, right now, we're actually limited on asphalt. We can hold 20 tons, you know, max. So if a crew's working on East Street, they have, you know, the capability of installing maybe 280 to 300 feet of gas main before they run out of asphalt. So right now, we're limited on asphalt if we do continue during the night.
Thank you. So I just want to be clear, the proposal is to change from evening work to daytime work, not to do both shifts, not to have both shifts, is that correct?
That's correct, Joe.
Thank you.
Mary, anything further?
Nothing further.
You know, this isn't an easy, it's just not an easy decision. It wasn't easy the first time we went through this, which was back in June, because we know that it's an inconvenience and it's disruptive. And, you know, Craig, I take your point that it's now a very stressful environment and we're, you know, we're adding this infrastructure work on top of it. I do think it's important work for the town to continue with. And, you know, I'm, although I agree that, you know, it's likely we're going to hit ledge, I'm hopeful that, I'm hopeful that they can work through it as efficiently as they possibly can. There's no further discussion, I would take a motion if anyone cares to make one.
I'll make a motion to approve the request by National Grid to alter the work hours to install and maintain a gas line on Rockwood Road as contained in a prior vote of the Board of Selectmen taken on July 16, 2019, approving said installation and maintenance of said gas line to allow for work to begin at 8:00 AM and end by 5:00 PM, Monday through Friday.
Is there a second?
Okay.
All those in favor, by roll call vote, Joe?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Karen?
Aye.
Okay, good luck, National Grid, and everybody be safe out there.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for being on. And now we will move to public comment for items that are not on the agenda this evening. So if anybody has anything that does not appear on the agenda they'd like to bring up before us, now's the time. Okay, I see none. We have one vote tonight. So, you know, I reported this out, I think, last week or the week before, that, you know, business is continuing to go on and in particular, the planning process around the Foster Elementary School. As you may all recall, we were invited to participate in the Massachusetts School Building Authority's building program for the elementary school, which means that there will be a percentage of state reimbursement for the construction costs of this facility. So we need to work kind of hand in hand with the MSBA on the planning and execution of the construction project. And so there are, you know, there are a number of filings that we need to make in connection with that. And one of them is this initial compliance certification form, which essentially says, you know, we've held the meetings that we've needed to hold, we have approved feasibility money, which we have approved some, and eventually, we will approve an additional amount or ask for the approval of additional amount at town meeting. But it's a, you know, fairly pro forma, but it, the MSBA, the MSBA requires that the school district as well as the town sign off on these documents. And so we need to authorize somebody, the chair, to be able to sign on behalf of the town. And I guess, you know, one thing I'd like to say, which is maybe somewhat counterintuitive is, no one Board of Selectmen has any authority by themselves. So, you know, I got sent this letter last week and asked to sign it, and I can't because we operate all together, Joe, Mary, and me. We are the executive of the town. And so it provides, I think, a good check, it provides a public check on any of the activities that, you know, go through the Board of Selectmen's office. And that's why we're bringing it to you before the board tonight to ask for this permission because, again, you know, no one person can act for the board without the permission of the other, the other members of the board. Joe, any questions or comments?
No, I really appreciate your efforts and really these efforts to keep this moving forward. So I've got no questions on the vote.
Mary?
No, I actually, I had a couple of questions and Tom helped track down the answers. I appreciate his and John Ferris's efforts. No questions.
Okay, great. Are there questions or comments from the public with respect to the Foster School initial compliance certificate? Okay, seeing none, I would take a motion for the execution of that document.
I move to authorize the Chair of the Board of Selectmen to sign the initial compliance certification as required by the Massachusetts School Building Authority, the FBA, to be eligible for an MSBA invitation into feasibility study.
Second.
All those in favor, by roll call, Joe?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Karen?
Aye.
Great, well, my intent would be to sign this tonight and scan a copy over to John so he can send it off to the MSBA. And as you both suggest, there's a lot of work that needs to be done, a lot of data that needs to be gathered, and enrollment studies and the like. So I think this is one of the steps in the process and it allows folks to kind of continue to move this along, which is, you know, exciting for the town.
Karen, do we have a second motion as well that we need to consider?
I think we took that one, there's a revised vote list, Joe, I think we took that one off for now. I, so I, there are a bunch of these kind of pro forma documents that I think the board will be asked to execute in the next little bit. And I wanted to spend a little more time with the regulations that talk about the ability of the board to designate a member to be able to sign. And I guess my thinking around this would be, you know, so long as they are kind of pro forma documents and not documents that would raise any kind of policy or economic or other kind of decision points, then, you know, it might make sense to delegate somebody so that, again, we can just keep things moving. But I just want to understand where that dividing line is because, you know, as I pointed out earlier, I think, you know, I think some of this discussion by us is important and also, you know, continues to bring the project up before the public that this stuff is moving forward. So I think it's, I'm thinking about where to draw a line to say, okay, you know, the Chair of the Board can sign documents, these sorts of documents, but not other documents. So that was going to be the subject of another vote tonight, but I think we need to spend a little more time thinking about it before we act on it. So sorry about that confusion, Joe.
Thank you.
Mary, anything further?
Nope.
Okay. Anything further from the public on the compliance certificate? No. So I would move to Town Administrator Reports, Michelle.
Nothing for me tonight, thank you.
Tom?
Sure, so, you know, we're all COVID all the time right now, it seems, but it's nice to get some good news. So I wanted to report out that we had, as you all know, you hired them, four police officers in our, in police academies over the last several months. Those four gentlemen are Jake Handrahan, Max Goldstein, Kevin Duff, and Chris Miservi. All four have graduated. And as of, I believe it was yesterday afternoon, that all four of them have now been sworn in and are working as police officers in Hingham. So I wanted to welcome them. We did a swearing-in ceremony remotely. Town Clerk Eileen McCracken was on a video conference with each of them. And they were present at the police station, standing six feet from the deputy chief, who in gloved hands handed them their badges. So that all happened. It was, it's a, you know, a unique way to be sworn in as a police officer in town. But I've called each of them directly and relayed all of our appreciation for them and their efforts and welcomed them to the team. So a little bit of good news.
That's great.
Fantastic. Now, you know, it's just, these are one of those disappointing moments. I think all of us, all of our families are experiencing this where you've, you know, reached kind of the pinnacle or the milestone. And typically, there's an opportunity to celebrate that with your family and friends and have some public recognition of your accomplishment. The Police and Fire Department do that really, really well. And, you know, I think we tried to do the best we could in this situation, but we look forward to welcoming those four officers, you know, more publicly just as soon as we can. And we appreciate, you know, their willingness to step into the fray at this very uncertain time. You know, our public safety folks are doing just an amazing job. And, you know, I know that the police chief is, was happy to get, you know, four more folks to continue to serve this town. So I don't know whether the deputy chiefs on the line wants to say anything, but we're very proud of those four young men.
Okay, Karen, thank you very much for your support, I appreciate it. They were, had a lot of disappointment in their academy, they lost their graduation at Faneuil Hall, they had a week shaved off their academy time and just tried to bring a little bit of normalcy to their swearing-in, although it was outside in the back parking lot. of normalcy to their swearing, although it was outside in the back parking lot. At one time, it was still a good time, and get excited to get them on the force with us and working as quick as we can.
Fantastic. Thank you, Deputy Chief. Joe?
Tom, are you finished?
Tom, do you have anything else?
No, I'm good, thank you.
Joe?
Yes, so I was going to also add that you should tell the new officers that there'll be a special Selectmen's initiation process once we can actually meet them again. But I wanted to say a couple of things. First, to give a special thanks to our state elected officials, Senator O'Connor and Representative Muschino, who's really been looking out for the town's interests as various bills are being considered. And they've been in touch with town officials, and they've really done a great job making sure that our interests are being looked at. I'd also like to remind everyone who is listening that if they have not yet done it, they should complete the U.S. Census. This will help assure that our town receives its proper share of state funds and will assure that our state receives its proper share of federal funds. So please, if you have not completed the census, you should do so. And then finally, I have to note tomorrow evening is the start of the Jewish holiday Passover, and this weekend is Good Friday and Easter. These are unusual times, and it's comforting to see that members of our community are continuing to honor their religious beliefs and to meet virtually at this point and to continue their celebrations. Thank you.
Thanks, Joe. Mary, anything tonight?
You know, the only thing that I would add is just to underscore something that Tom said in his COVID-19 report, which is that, you know, as the weather is improving, it's just really important that all of us in the community adhere to the guidelines that our state health officers and the governor have put forward. The more we can do those actions, the more quickly we will be able to resume some of the activities that we can't do right now. I know that people are looking for exercise. Wampanoag is crowded, Bear Cove is crowded. But again, let's all please enjoy that time outdoors while respecting the guidelines that have been put forward.
Thanks, Mary. I just have a couple of quick things. You know, I noted that Tom and I participated in a couple of MSBA meetings, one actually with the MSBA and then another meeting with our team here on the ground to, again, continue to move forward on the Foster School planning. I met with the Library Board this week, and as Joe pointed out, I just am amazed at how quickly they are moving to an online focus to try to continue to serve patrons. And as I told the Library Board, I'm also very, very appreciative of the library staff stepping up like so many other town staff people and really just pitching in, pardon me, wherever anybody's needed. It's that team effort that is really making, I think, making a difference here in town and appreciate the library's participation in that. You know, again, I feel like a broken record, but I am just very moved by the generosity of people across Hingham. I had several emails today from, in particular, the Department of Veteran Services. I know that the Police Association has supported the veteran services as has private citizens. And it's just so, so meaningful. And the emails that I've gotten from our VSO Keith German as well as Lisa Potts, kind of relaying the gratitude of those folks that benefit from that generosity is, you know, is just, it makes you stop and pause. And I think in all these bad things, you see really just this genuine nature of the community here in Hingham. And I know that Mary's talked before about Hingham Link where, you know, folks are matching up, can request help and can be matched up with help. And, you know, my understanding is that's going very well as well. There are a couple of other things. One is, and Joe and Mary have been supporting this as well, the, our state delegation, principally Representative Muschino and Senator O'Connor, have been trying to conceptualize, I think, some of the benefits for small businesses that are being offered pursuant to the CARES Act. And we are working with them to, and the Downtown Association as well as the Hingham Business Council, to put on a webinar for our merchants. You know, we have, this board is very, very supportive of the Hingham merchants, and we want to make sure that they understand the resources that are available principally at the federal level to try to help them get through this just, you know, crazy time. And last but not least, and if Paul Hill is tuning in, he'll appreciate this announcement. The celebration of Grape, the Battle of Grape Island, I've just been informed, has been postponed till September 20th. So mark your calendars for that date. It's a great, it's a great, a great event. So thanks, everybody. Really, really appreciate it. I appreciate you calling in and I appreciate your patience with us as we try to work through the town business in this kind of unusual format. So unless anybody has anything else, I would accept a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, Joe?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Karen?